Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 4th, 2018 City Council Meeting. If you could please stand for the flag.
(inaudible)
Roll call?
Mayor Falendorf.
Here.
Vice Mayor Herman.
Here.
Councilmember Beatty.
Here.
Councilmember McShirley.
Here.
Councilmember Olivera.
Present.
Is there any council member that wishes to change anything on the agenda? Nope. Any public comment? Okay, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on matters not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Nope. Item four is consent agenda. We have four items on our consent agenda. Is there any public comment? Okay, I will bring it back to council.
I've got questions on three of them.
Okay.
But D, I'm okay with.
Okay, so, is there a motion to approve item D?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, regarding item A, in public comment, from the minutes, item three, we say in our public comments section that issues raised in the meetings will either be referred to staff for consideration or follow-up and/or placed on a future agenda. And we had Gary Gordon speak to some concerns over fire safety access to the annex area last time. All we say in the minutes is that he expressed concerns, but my take is that that should have been referred to staff in some way to evaluate that because it was a public safety issue. So, whatever we need to do to make that an action item of some kind, I'd appreciate it.
Perfect. We can take that as direction and agendize that for the next available agenda.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you'd agendize, though, as a general concern about infrastructure in the city that there's no quick fix to.
So, well, I think we could provide a discussion as to what our emergency response plans are. I think their concern lies if the bridge was shut down, how are we accessing the houses in that area? I think that we have alternatives, but I need to review those with fire, and we can bring that for a discussion. And it might need to further direction to the fire department regarding our response in that area. But we can bring a discussion as to what the access routes would be should 49 be shut down.
Okay. That's all I had on A.
Okay. Do we want to go through and approve each, or just go through all of them and approve like a lot?
He essentially pulled them, so I would just go through and see if there's a motion on each one and then move on to the next one.
Okay. So if there's no further comment from the public or council, any public comment? Nope. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Item B, appointment of city treasurer clerk.
Yes. My issue there was, thank you, Mary, you're in the room somewhere, for stepping up to that again, but I'm wondering, does it make any sense to put this back on the ballot again with a better educational process going in to just make this an appointed thing instead of going through this? Nobody ran every year in doing that. I think we didn't miss it by much in the last election, and with a better communications plan, we might be able to position that a little bit better, so I was just wondering if that was a possibility.
You know, when I came tonight, I wanted to encourage you guys on the next general election to put that on. It was on in the June ballot and did not pass by, I think, Susan 15 votes, so I would really recommend, I wouldn't put it, I mean unless Susan checks, is they're going to charge you, the county will charge you to put this special thing on their ballot in June, but I would definitely encourage you to do that again so that you can have these as appointed, not appointed by the city council and not me or someone within the city.
Yeah, and then, but further get some kind of a communications plan, Debbie, just like you guys did. I mean, you guys did such a great job with Measure C, with all of that, so something along those lines would probably get us past that 15.
We can bring in informational item, given how busy the registrar's office has been probably in January.
Mm-hmm.
Go through the different options and then just get direction for you when we would go back. The biggest thing we'll need from them is how much they would charge in the different elections that would be available to us.
Okay.
So we can make the most cost-effective decision.
Okay.
Any public comment? Nope. Okay, is there a motion to approve item B?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mary.
Item C, adoption of salary schedule for part-time employees.
Yeah, just a background question on that before I put my stamp on it. There was comments in there about a select, small select group that went to CalPERS as a result of some analysis that supposedly made that cost-effective. Just that was before my time. I just would like to understand how and why we did that and how many employees are involved in that CalPERS decision. This is part-time people going past 960 by some incremental amount that causes us to think it's cost-effective to put them in CalPERS.
Anyone who goes over the 960 hours as a part-time person has to immediately be brought into CalPERS membership. So that has happened in the past when we could not get enough people to staff the place, so it's been going on for some time, and then more recently there were four?
No. I couldn't speak to specifically say now.
Okay, so yeah, I don't know exactly how many are on there, but the only way to keep them from going over the 960 is to manage a humongous staff of very, extremely part-time people, which hasn't really been manageable lately.
And so what, the city's financial responsibility in every time one of these folks gets over the 960 and goes in, is there some incremental contribution we made, or we just?
We make the regular contribution for fire. They contribute, I think it's 7%, and we contribute whatever the annual that year's contribution is, which is approximately, I don't know, I think it's 12% of their payroll.
Okay. And that's times four people at the moment, we think?
Well...
Based on what they made?
Majority of the staff, even prior to this point, was triggered at some point into the PERS system, either by us or with another employer. So maybe four came on board just recently, or will we anticipate?
Yes.
So with this, I'm sorry, Scott.
Go ahead.
Not will, but have.
So with this other employer thing, which happens a lot because we're using part-time people.
Right.
Is there a contribution, a fractional contribution with the other employers? We're only paying for the part?
We only pay for the hours that they work for us.
Here.
Right.
Okay.
And ones that have full-time employment with another agency, their hours that they work for us are considered overtime and we don't pay into the PERS. Their full allotment is paid by their full-time agency.
Okay. I'm good.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Any public comment? Nope. Okay, is there a motion to approve item C?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item five, regular agenda. 5A, acceptance of offer for dedication for public use of portion of Capello Road. Amy.
Excuse me. As an employee of Habitat for Humanity, I'm going to recuse myself on the side.
(inaudible). Let's walk back here. Anything to say? Madam Mayor, council members, we had a request from Habitat for Humanity to accept dedication of a portion of Capello Lane and Bullion Drive to facilitate the development of the parcels that would be built upon for Habitat for Humanity. Looking at this overhead over here, we'll clarify what staff's recommendation is.
Basically, this is the proposed future Habitat for Humanity parcels, but even if Habitat for Humanity did not...
He can't hear you. He's not recording your voice because you're not near the microphone.
Okay. I don't have a pointer, so I'll talk as loudly as I can.
That's all we got.
Regardless of who would develop on this property, as you can see, getting from the highway back to this property, there's no way to do that unless you access it from Capello, or perhaps would even access it from this non-existent Bullion Drive. Capello, as we all know, is already constructed, is already being used, it's already serving existing developments. Staff is recommending that the council accept the dedication for public use of Capello, but not for maintenance, and the resolution in your packet provides for that. As for Bullion Drive, you'll notice a blue line that's dotted up there. That is our future alignment for Foundry Lane. On the advice of Caltrans, their preference is, as is staff's, that we not accept Bullion Drive because that would place into conflict that encroachment onto the highway. You can see where there would be two encroachments onto the state highway very close by. Here and here. And if we were to take and accept the dedication for Bullion, the public would come in and assume that meant we were planning on building Bullion, which is not what our plan is. Our plan is to build Foundry Lane and connect it into a broader, specific plan and a more regional approach. A secondary access would be allowed from the future Habitat for Humanity parcel onto Foundry Lane. So with that, are there any questions?
Yes.
Accepting that and not accepting the maintenance puts the responsibility from maintenance where?
On the same people that currently maintain it.
And that's the property owners along that road?
That is my understanding.
Some kind of a...
That would not change. Now, when somebody comes in and develops that property, we then make them upgrade it to city standards and do improvements to it, and at that time, if we wanted to talk about maintenance, we could revisit it, perhaps look at a city service area that had all of the property owners along Capello, enter into a more formal agreement to do maintenance. But right now, it's the property owners nearby that do the maintenance.
And Amy, did you say that off of Foundry, there could be a road that goes in?
There will in fact be one.
Go to, back that way.
In the sensitive plan, there's actually a connection that would go right there.
Oh, okay.
So it would create the same function as a secondary access for that. Any other questions?
So you have it outlined here, this entire area.
Yes.
Future Habitat for Humanity.
All of the yellow.
But you're talking about development down in what appears on this map, on the lower right area, as opposed to up by Capello Drive?
Well, let me shrink that for you. This Foundry Lane, is that what you're asking me about?
Well, I'm asking about, the entire area is for Habitat for Humanity, but when you said you were, you were talking about development, it was down here by what would possibly be this Bullion Drive, as opposed to up by Capello Drive that is currently existing.
Capello Drive that is currently existing does access that Habitat for Humanity site. They are actually looking at doing a phased development, and that would provide them the public access that would be needed to, for example, obtain funding sources.
So opening up this part of Capello Drive to the public?
As a public easement, it means that if you want to develop that parcel and you want to get financing, that's the key. If you want to get financing to develop that parcel, you have to show that there is an access that's dedicated for it.
And then that developer has to take on the develop, the...
Maintain, do maintenance.
Maintenance and the possible upgrade of that portion of the road?
Yes.
Okay.
His fair share, yeah.
Yeah.
And at that time, we could, of course, look at having...
I just don't want the homeowners along that road to suddenly have a bunch of traffic that does a lot of damage and, you know, washboarding, et cetera.
Yeah, and as far as the public's concerned, it's exactly the same as it always has been. It would only be for anybody, whether it be Habitat for Humanity or anybody wanting to develop that parcel, so that they could get financing and prove that they had a public access to the property.
As it sits right now, is that paved or is it?
It's paved.
Gravelled?
It's paved, and then it drops into gravel at the end, right there, where it stops, the dedication stops.
Okay.
Since Foundry Lane is already in the plan, will that impact any future finance for them if we shift it from where the red line is and just focus on the Foundry Lane for the future?
It should not because both have about the same likelihood of being constructed. Bullion isn't there, Foundry Lane isn't there, and the likelihood of getting an encroachment permit from Caltrans for Bullion is not very big right now. Whereas for Foundry, much better.
Okay. Is council done with questions? Is there any public comment?
So Debbie Pawnee with Destination Angels Camp, and we're in support of this, but I think if I understand, Amy, the reason this is necessary is that there is no current public access to this parcel?
No publicly dedicated access, is my question.
Okay, so it's critical that they have that as they pursue various different loans, whether they be state or federal funds and that sort of thing, so we support it through Destination Angels Camp. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, bring it back to council. If there's no further questions, is there a motion to support staff's recommendation?
I'll move to accept staff's recommendation on dedication to a portion of Capello Lane, excluding city maintenance pursuant to the resolution 1848.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passage for 001.
Good job, guys.
Okay, on to item B, approval of the transfer of $60,000 from the water fund to wastewater fund to adjust capacity issues in the wastewater distribution system. Amy.
Madam Mayor, council members, this one's not as straightforward as the last item was. This one's a little bit more complicated. Back in 2009, the city council certified the EIR for the general plan. At that time, we were required to put in a mitigation measure into our general plan that basically said that there would be no development... Great. In the yellow map that's in front of you. Everywhere that you see red lines, our general plan basically says...
Which one are we looking at?
Same one. You evidently have two. You'll see some green lines and you'll see red lines.
Yeah, they're the same. Sorry, Amy realized that you guys didn't get a color copy, and I realized you didn't get one.
Oh, oops, sorry.
(laughing).
No, they're different shades.
So they're different color printers.
Got it.
Is there, since I can't get a slide up, anybody else can?
Yeah.
Don't need the slide yet. So basically, what the general plan says is that any development that needs to use any of these red lines cannot proceed until there is a fix to the system, and that fix to the system is located...
Maybe you have a copy of the...
So basically, all of these pipes come downhill to Booster Way, that's the green area, and then further down and proceed down to the wastewater treatment plant. Where you see those green lines starting, that's also where Stealthy Park comes in. And what happens during wet weather is the water that comes into the system, plus that full amount of sewage that goes into the system, clogs up at that point, starts backing up. Those lines, therefore, are considered to be already at capacity, so any additional development on there is not supposed to occur until that segment is fixed. Under our wastewater master plan, it has been on the books for a very long time that that needs to be fixed before development can proceed. So, we are proposing to fix it. It is the number-one project to be fixed in the wastewater master plan. And what we're proposing to do, because we have several pending developments that may not be able to proceed unless we get this done as quickly as possible, is on page two of your staff report, you'll see alternative one and alternative two in a box, and we are proposing that the city authorize us to pursue alternative one, which would allow us to have this constructed and improved by December of 2020, which is a very aggressive way to pursue it, but here's the key. If we take $60,000 from the water fund and loan it to the wastewater improvement fund, we can start environmental now, immediately, have it completed by September. By December 31st of this year, Blackwater Consulting has offered to submit a grant application for $2 million to Regional Water Quality Control Board for grant funding to do this project at no charge to the city. By having those two processes go concurrently, us doing our own environmental, another firm pursuing the grant funding that we need, they will come together so that construction could start in April and be done by December of 2020. So two years from now, we could in fact have this bottleneck, as I like to call it, removed, and those developments that are pending that would need to use that sewer line, they would be able to proceed. In the interim, what we would do is for those developments that want to start processing now, we would simply do a development agreement with them. We would ask them to phase their projects. We could perhaps do a first phase with them to get, say, six units done over the next two years, and then have them hold until after December 2020 before proceeding with additional development, so that we did not overtax our system and we stayed compliant with our general plan. So staff is asking that, we actually have an addition, a slight change to what we're recommending. We're recommending an approval of the transfer of $60,000 loan from the water fund to wastewater fund. We are asking for authorization for Blackwater Consulting to prepare and submit the construction application to undertake the improvements for up to $2 million, and item number three, to authorize the city to release a request for proposals for the environmental studies to commence in January. And that's all I had. Are there any questions?
First question, have you, have city staff been in contact with the developers that are impacted by this?
Yes.
Okay, and everyone is...
They may have something to say when you ask for public input.
Okay.
So are we ignoring the red?
No, what we would be doing is all of the green and all of the red, and because it does not make sense to take out those gaps and not fix the whole thing all at once, we're actually going to go from the green tip at the very top to the red tip at the very bottom, one fell swoop, the entire thing, not gaps, just put in a larger line the whole way.
Okay, and that will, that will solve the problem? There's no bottlenecks or concerns upstream from that?
Yes, it's a capacity issue, and the hydraulics are such that it goes, and then just stops right there and backs up.
Okay. So just to be clear, that bottleneck there creates all of that red backing up all the way to the top of the system?
Exactly. Yeah, although the worst of it's right there, and whenever you add anything upstream, downstream is affected.
Is there, is there a way, it might be a silly question, but I'm seeing some on the map, going down Main Street, there's one part by, here, see the name of the street, let's see. There's one part where the red stops and dead-ends, and then the green starts a little loop. It's by, is it Demerist? No. No, it's not. It's Stanislaus, it looks like.
It shouldn't be Stanislaus.
I'm looking at the other, at the other map, the first one.
Someone's looking at, right here?
Yes.
It seems like there's this little tiny area, if we connect those two there, can we connect them, and if so, wouldn't that release a lot of the bottleneck on the north side of town?
In January, there will be a full presentation on what improvements need to be done to that other system that that would feed into instead. In other words, going through the Angel Oaks and Greenhorn Creek system, that other line, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, it just looks like on the, on the main street, it goes from red to green, and it's literally, it looks like maybe 100 yards or something between the two systems.
Yeah, it flips to, it flips, it does, it flips to the Angel Oaks, Greenhorn Creek system. That would overtax that system, which is, are the very next one to get an improvement so that it does not do the same backup problem.
Okay.
But good suggestion. Any other questions?
Regarding the money, the $60,000 loan one fund to another, the 2% interest, is there a schedule for that payment, or is it just repaid?
Three years, 2%. Three years, 2%.
Is there a payment schedule, or is it due at the end?
We were planning on doing 202020.
Okay.
And if we get the grant, we pay it back more quickly.
Okay, and the 2% represents just the lost interest on the escrow accounts that we're borrowing from, so it makes it whole? Is that what the idea is?
Honestly, I copied what we'd done the last time we did one of these. I honestly don't know the source of it.
Is there any fiscal impact to the citizens at all? Because the same water sewer bills, the same where...
There's a huge impact to the city, because if it doesn't get done, done...
To the citizens, though, and their bills.
The $60,000 should not.
It's just water.
Because the $60,000 facilitates us getting $2 million in grants, which is the key. So it really, it's... So, it really, it's extremely well-spent and invested money.
So, there really is no downside in doing this, this way?
No. I wish we'd done it a long time ago.
It's just unfortunate that it took these development to force their hand to make this. And now they're having to suffer previous consequences that we didn't.
Yeah. So, we want to fix it now, as quickly as possible.
We only found out about it back in 2009, so, come on.
You were.
And I was hearing about it in 2009.
2004. Let's see if we can beat the staircase.
The other thing that I don't, so with this freeze that we had done to ourselves from 2009, why hadn't, without beating?
Anybody?
Yeah. Why wasn't that carried on between both the Planning Commission and the Council of these, so we could have prevented some of these unintended consequences that we're dealing with now?
There's three reasons that it hasn't become as big of an issue. One, there hasn't been much new development since then.
Okay.
Two, the new development that there is, there is a clause in that restriction, that moratorium, if you will, that says if you can have a no net increase in the number of connections, you can go forward. So, Tractor Supply, for example, they removed two hookups and they replaced it with one. So, they had no net increase. So, we were able to approve them. So, those are two of the reasons that it hasn't become a crisis at this point. But now, we've got a lot more applications and it's become a problem.
Okay. If there's no other further questions from Council or comment, are we going to put it to the public? Is there, okay. Public, is there any public comment?
Yeah, Furman Brown. We are so excited that, that there's a proposal to transfer $60,000 from wastewater, from water to wastewater, which would help facilitate a grant of $2 million. You know, if we don't improve our infrastructure, we can't grow. And in the last bulletin board on the, on the road, we have 3,800 in population. You know, I see it, think it's very hard for $3,800 to support a city's functions. And so, this proposal would help the city to grow and to keep the city alive. So, we are really for it. There are several projects hinging upon this, and I encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's John Allen. I run John Allen Construction out of San Andreas. We, one of these projects that's hinging on this is, is a 36-unit complex on Murphy's Grade Road. So, we've been working on this about a year, trying to get the sewer stuff figured out. And then, we didn't know that this issue was, was there until about a month ago. So, if we can't get some kind of commitment from the city that they're going to move forward, we're, you know, going to take our development somewhere else. So, we're very for it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other?
So, Debbie Ponting with Destination Angels Camp. And Destination Angels Camp supports staff's recommendation to take the $60,000 and utilize it towards the $2 million grant. I recently have been attending some classes and such on USDA grants and CDBG grants. And the money is out there. And I believe you're utilizing some resources with Amy, Blackwater, Weber-Giow, in regards to being very successful in achieving these kinds of grants for rural communities. In addition to that, there's a real emphasis on workforce housing throughout the state of California, and this is a perfect project for this kind of workforce housing. We see it every day with folks needing a place to live. And earlier, we looked at the Habitat for Humanity. That's another perfect project in regards to bringing affordable housing to our community that is so much needed, not only for Angels Camp, but for Calaveras County. But of course, we're more interested in Angels Camp right now. So, Destination Angels Camp supports this particular endeavor to get this project moving. And, and it's a very critical timeframe to follow, because if we don't move quickly on it, then we will lose these kinds of developments. So, we encourage your support to approve this.
Is there any other public comment before I bring it back to Council? Okay. Is there any other further questions for staff? Okay. If there's no other further question, is there a motion to approve that refund the base?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the transfer of $60,000 from the Water Fund to Wastewater Fund as a loan.
As a loan.
And authorize consultant to submit a construction application for state funding of associated improvements. And I think there's a third part of authorizing city release request for proposal. And I didn't get, what's the last part of that? A request for proposal for what?
Environmental studies.
Environmental studies. Okay. I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Bye, though.
Item C, approval of the Calaveras Council of Government local transportation claims and budget. Melissa?
Okay. Thank you. So, I recommend approval of the claims. They are under consideration by the Council of Governments, I believe, tomorrow. We had identified a balance of about $3,600 from the 1415 claim. At the time that those funds were being identified, we were receiving numerous complaints in the historic district regarding the aphids, the impacts that they have on the sidewalks, and the need to maintain the trees on the sidewalks, expenses that we have not budgeted for a number of years because of our financial situation. So, my recommendation is, again, we didn't have that budgeted in the 1819 budget. This provided us the opportunity to realize some revenue so that the Public Works Department could add that to their work program and complete that task as requested by the downtown historic merchants. The modification to the claim is minor, and you'll see that we typically try to keep the claim requests very broad, so that we could utilize them for projects that most benefit city priorities. The next allocation request is for approximately $21,000 in 1718 funds. We had estimated available $8,000 in the budget. The COG apportionment isn't made available until after the close of their fiscal year and a reconciliation of their approved claims. So, we're not able to identify the exact amount. We had already budgeted $8,000. That went to the Transportation Budget Fund 139. That's already been approved by Council. We have a balance of approximately $13,000, and we are recommending that for use on road maintenance, labor, materials, in the amount of $4,000. And road repair contractor costs for the water line replacement project in the amount of $5,000. We have a bid. We had the water leak. We had a repair that we had to do, and I need to go back and I need to permanently fix that State Highway 49 road repair. So, utilizing this COG money helps me preserve capital money in my water and my sewer funds, and it's an eligible expense for this COG money. The $4,000 I have identified, we've kept it generic enough. I have two projects. One, I've got to pay labor to shut down the highway to do traffic control. So, that's a potential for that expense. And then, two, the Council directed the replacement of the signs, Angel Oaks, Greenhorn Creek Drive. So, we have those and a number of signs in the Greenhorn Creek subdivision that need to be replaced. So, we have an estimate for those costs as well that are not identified in the current year budget, but have been directioned and approved by Council in the last fiscal year. So, I recommend approval of those claims and the budget request, so that we can complete those projects.
Any Council comment or question?
In regards to the sign on four, for the Angel Oaks, Greenhorn Creek Drive sign, is there any money from COG or the state or anyone, anywhere, to have that lit up? I know that soon as the sun goes down, driving, you know, from the copper area up.
We approved that. We approved a project.
Didn't we get a light?
We did.
Yeah. So, what's the status on that?
So, we did submit a letter to Caltrans when we did the letter to change the sign on the highway. So, Caltrans is doing a safety study to determine if that intersection meets warrants for a lighted intersection, because that's one of the things, is it needs to meet their warrants. They said that they've completed that study and that they are in the process of drafting a response to the city regarding the light. I didn't ask about lighting the sign, though. We asked for a street light at the intersection.
That would be good, too.
But I'm not sure if you're saying.
You can't, I mean, there's no turn lane. There's nothing there, too.
I think we relatively, that even if Caltrans doesn't cooperate, we could put a light on Greenhorn Creek, Angel Oaks Road, or whatever it's called now.
So, we did submit that also as the call for projects for the Calaveras Council of Governments, and it was not identified as a regional project and supported by them for funding. And what they recommended is that we work with Caltrans to see if it meets warrants, and then also that they would put it as a recommended item in their systematic safety analysis plan, which they got Caltrans funding to evaluate. So, it's my understanding that Caltrans is looking into it, as well as the COG, on two different levels. But it was not approved for funding by COG. Instead, we had other projects that they recommended approval in that call for projects. So, I'm still waiting. We haven't heard if Caltrans is saying no. They did say yes to the signs, and it's my understanding those have been ordered. And we, they've issued a contract award, and there's a contractor that replaces all of the district signs in the district, includes, I think, four counties. So, it's my understanding that that should be coming. But I follow up on the.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, do you know when they're going to, when we'll get their response?
Right. So, they told me in September that the signs had been ordered and that they were in the maintenance yard, and they were waiting for the rotation of the contractor. And then, they told me just a few weeks ago, I think, Mayor Volendorf inquired at our previous council meeting. They said that the letter is in the mail on this, on the light. So, I will follow back up with them and report back to you guys on where we are with the light and their response.
Okay. And worst-case scenario, and they don't approve a light there, which wouldn't make sense to me, but what is our response? I mean, what, what are our options in responding and saying, no, we really want you to reconsider?
So, for Caltrans, they have to meet warrants, because if they put an improvement like that, it has to justify. If I were to say that we will fund it, I don't know if they would then support and consider the item. And I believe we estimated it, I, if I remember, it's about $150,000, in which case, that's not.
Right.
Budget that we have right now for.
Yeah.
A project at that level. So, we requested it from COG. We requested COG analyze it through their systemic safety analysis, and we requested that Caltrans analyze it to see if any agency could warrant the investment. We could bring that back in next year's budget development to see if, if that's how. We have some SV1 funding that we had put aside and have been banking for paving on, I think, Angels Oaks. Or where was that SV1? It's on Angels Oaks Drive.
We already spent it.
No, we're saving it, but you've identified a project for.
That was just a holding pattern. It wasn't, it was, we had to show a road that we wanted to, but it didn't, but we are not locked into that road.
Yeah. It's the road that parallels Angels Oaks Drive.
Oh, Acorn?
Acorn. So, we've identified Acorn. CTC's approved that. And so, we have just a limited amount of money. It would be a matter of priorities if that's where we'd like to take it off of a paving project and maybe consider investing it in a light project. But I think for now, what I'd like to do is at least just get Caltrans response.
Yeah.
So, we can see where they are with the light.
Yeah.
But definitely, not enough money in this budget to get us the light. I don't know if there's a, if there's a way. I know the sign's already going to be reflective. I don't know if there's any alternatives for lighting the sign or local alternatives for lighting that intersection. I don't know.
Is, is that one of the intersections they're planning a traffic circle?
So, that's the other thing, is that we are moving forward with the Gateway Corridor Study that the Council's approved. And so, there are intersection improvements planned there. There are intersection improvements planned at Foundry Lane, and there are also intersections at the 449 and Francis. So, those aren't going to be moving forward within the next few years. Most likely, we're looking at, if Caltrans can move forward with the intersection at 449 and Francis, programming environmental design in 2022. But we do have plans to address those intersections. And in transportation planning, within five years is short-term. I know it doesn't feel like that when you're a local resident experiencing that intersection. But I think at this point, I'd like to just.
Yeah.
Find out where COG is.
Get a light.
On their SSRP report, and then also what Caltrans determined, and then find out when the signs will be installed, because I know they've been ordered.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other Council comment or question?
I'm just going to downtown. I know, the last time I parked downtown was before the rain started, was the aphids. And I thought, what's wrong with my, my car is all sticky again. And, but I know there are a lot of, you know, all of the businesses there complain whenever it does happen, and it's, happens every year. So, it's important.
Is there any public comment? Nope. Okay. Since we discussed, I don't know if this is the item to ask this from staff, but since we are discussing budget amendments and you guys are going through different things, is there, at this time while you're reallocating funds, to see if there is a cost saving somewhere to allocate those funding to potential training, not only for council members, but also for staff coming up for this next year, as we're going into budget and moving things around?
We can agendaize it as a discussion item, but we couldn't take action tonight.
And that's fine. But can we have that in the future to discuss, once you start going through your line items and seeing that something could be funding for staff to go to training or council members?
Yes. And so, we've talked, Emily and I have talked about that, and we are preparing for your mid-year report. And so, we can look at where we might have any savings and if new council members would consider training. I know that there are some opportunities coming. So, we can look at future budget adjustments and agendaize that with the new council after the first of the year.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about that. When you say the new council, I mean, I know that we didn't receive training. So, would that include everyone but Amanda?
That's what you guys get to vote on.
Yeah.
Who gets included and who doesn't?
All right. So, we can, we can look.
Not you.
Where's Alvin? Is he not here?
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve Agenda Item C?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Item D, approval of contract award with Inner West Consulting Group for Building Official and Code Enforcement Services, for an amount not to exceed $40,000 for the 2019 budget in following years.
Great. So, staff recommends approval of the contract to Inner West Consulting Amount, Group, in an amount not to exceed 40. That's the balance that we have in current projected salaries and benefits for the remainder of the year. And then, we've identified an amount in prior subsequent years, should the Council determine to exercise the right accordingly to extend on an annual basis thereafter, that does not exceed the current budgeted salaries and benefits. We've issued an RFQ on November 1st, and we received three proposals, Inner West, Will Dan, and Forleaf. We assembled a review committee comprised of myself, our existing building inspector, Steve Flag, Amy Augustine as our planning director, and Nathan Pry as fire marshal, all city staff who will be engaged with this position throughout the year. We reviewed the proposals and interviewed candidates. The committee unanimously recommended Inner West for council consideration. We have Will Crew here with Inner West. He would be serving as the on-call chief building official within the contract. He's here to answer any questions you may have about his proposal. We are anticipating a similar relationship with Inner West that we currently have with Augustine Planning and Associates, where there would be dedicated time on staff. They would be working with our permit tech, Jennifer Preston, to coordinate inspections. If this item is approved by the Council this evening, we are prepared to tour existing projects that we have and have notified those developers and applicants that we are considering hiring in this position. And their time to meet with them would be greatly appreciated, and they've been very supportive of that offer. I'm happy to answer any questions that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you do have. Also, I just wanted to point out as well, one of the things that stood out for staff in this proposal is that this is the same company that provides services to the city of Sonora, and they had proposed, I think what was fitting for us as a small rural community, a staffing plan that the other applicants had not proposed, whereby we have the building official on call, and then we have a part-time building inspector slash code enforcement officer at a lower, lower hourly rate, that would complete the majority of the work in the office. And Inner West is searching for retired and new residents, hopefully locally, from the area that they can pull from to fulfill that position. And in fact, I received a call yesterday, so I believe that we, we have some potential of local resources in the area, and they're doing a great job, I think, of casting a net and trying to recruit that position if they don't already have it on board. But I think that that was a staffing model that worked well for us, and was more affordable for us in the short term. And by short term, I mean this year and within, over the next two years. So with that, I'll hand it over to the council for any questions, and then also just take a moment to introduce Will, if you'd like to go over your proposal, or introduce your firm and yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, I'm a member of City Council, my name is Will Crew, I'm the regional manager for Inner West Consulting Group. As Melissa said, that we, we do staff the city of Sonora, and are very familiar with this area, we have a contract with Tuolumne County as well. We have over 200 building safety professionals in our company, we have about 450 government professionals throughout California, including city engineer, city engineers, real estate, acquisition, so on and so forth. So we're very familiar with local governments. We do business with very small communities and very large communities, and we tailor our resources on site to meet the needs of the community. And as I can see tonight, there's a lot of talk about infrastructure and development, and how that interfaces with permitting and regulations is, I think, is a economic development tool. And I think we can provide that service to you very, very well, and we can provide turnaround on plan reviews quickly, and know, and have seamless integration to what you have now, to where, and we are searching for local folks that could provide the building inspector position. We do have folks available right now, so if, if in fact this gets approved tonight, then we are ready to go with the boots on the ground immediately. But we, we would prefer to have someone that, that understands the area a little bit more. So with that, I can answer any questions.
No, good. With the, with the part-time person, are we gonna keep that under 960 hours, or is that gonna be Caltrans person, or?
So that's the good news with this, is that it's just a flat hourly rate. There are a contract position similar to Amy Augustine, and we won't be paying work comp, health benefits, hers.
So the total contract, it, it basically matches what we're spending now on the employees' total costs.
It does.
And we don't have the long-term liabilities of the Caltrans.
Correct.
And one of the big problems we have is consistency with record-keeping, year over year over year. What's built into your company and your folks to help us have a, you know, have a plan that makes sure that the things that need to be documented and upgraded and filed correctly are done and all that? And I'll continue with a couple more short questions. How old's your company, and how long have you had the relationship with Sonora and Tuolumne County?
I'll start with the first one, with, you're, you're, you're talking about permitting documents and-
Permitting documents, engineering drawings, anything that you might be involved with that require somebody five years down the road to go see what, you know, who said what and when and how's it documented?
Sure, I'm very familiar with building departments, and going from paper to electronic, I've done that in about five different building departments. I think we have a very solid handle on the law, on what it says, what we need to keep, and what we can dispose of. We have a permitting system that could be available for you, if you would like. That's electronic permitting system that keeps records and is accessible to the general public as well. We can also recommend current permitting systems to be modified or made into electronic files. So we, we, I'm currently in a project right now in El Grove, where we're actually taking all of our files that are paper copies and making them into electronic. We have the poss, we have the, the ability to do electronic reviews as well to the general public, so if someone wanted to submit plans electronically, we could do that. So, I think we can handle that, that project, and make sure that going forward, that your, your records are in line, your, your inspection records are in line, and all your comments and everything are all put together in a, in a good package, so.
So if, in this electronic world, you describe this data is on a server that you own?
Well, that's something detailed, we'd have to get into details of how that would work, but there's all, we have an IT group within our company that could, could actually do that, we could house it for you, or you could do it onsite, it's, but yeah, we could handle that.
Okay, thanks.
Other question?
Longevity and the relationships with Sonora and Tuolumne?
We've been in business since 2002. We started with El Grove, that was our first building department. We staff and manage, I believe, six or seven different building departments all across the state of California. We entered in an agreement with Sonora four years ago, I started there and I am still there currently.
They still like you?
I think they do. You can ask yourself.
We did check references.
The second, the second part of that was, was Tuolumne County, you had a relationship with them as well?
Yes, we just started a relationship with them, I'm, I'm actually, served on some committees with their director, and we just got a contract awarded to us, I believe it was in August, to do plan check and inspections. We actually did a onsite, after-hours project with them to help them catch up on their plan review. So we've kind of integrated ourselves into their program as well.
Great.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to council then. If there's no further questions or comments, is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the contract award with Inner West Consulting Group for Building Official and Code Enforcement Services.
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item E.
Get to work.
Tomorrow.
Item E, we have a list of employees for recognition, and so I'm gonna hand it over to Melissa.
Perfect, I just have one correction, instead of Chris Johnson, it's Chris Adams. But I just wanna take a minute each month to recognize the employees of the City of Angels, and I think one of the things that initiated this, as I may have said previously, was the City Gate report, we have information about employee morale and the need to, to work on that. And I think sort of recognizing their efforts starts at the top. My goal is that we recognize everyone and their years of service this first year, and then hopefully between Susan and I, we've made it a goal to create an employee recognition program. But we have a number of employees that have a substantial amount of years, and Susan has six years with city service, Bill Davis, who's in our fire department, has 13, and Chris Adams has 14 years with Angels PD. And so I think that those are definitely worthy of celebrating and just taking a moment to recognize them. So I thank you for doing that. And from City Hall, we issue them a card, celebrating, celebrating them, and signed by staff, so. Also, just to let you know, we will be doing our holiday lunch, and so if anyone has time, it would be great to stop by and see us on December 12th, I think, will be the employee holiday lunch. Send me an email, I will-
Where?
At the Carriage House or the museum.
Okay.
Let me know that, that you're coming.
Well, I think it's great that you guys are doing this, because it also brings the board, gives us more information of where staff is, and we, we kind of lose, we lose track, and sometimes we don't even realize it, so I'm glad to see this coming up. Thank you.
I wanted to say, if that's okay, I wanted to also mention that the one thing I did notice in first coming to the city council is the staff, I had just been so impressed with the hard work, and always from the very beginning, I was, and, and I know how much they have to carry, because we had to, had to cut back. So I'm also very pleased that we're doing this, I think it's very important to always recognize those who sacrifice and do their very best for us under some difficult, you know, circumstances.
They do, thank you.
Item F.
All right.
Fun and excitement for the last couple of weeks.
Super exciting, so as many of you are aware, after the four-day holiday weekend, staff returned to the community development office to find a cascade waterfall of water rushing out the front door. We had had a pipe break in the back bathroom, and 8,000 gallons of water went through the community development office, we think over a four-day period of time. So Monday, we immediately got teams in there, and Susan deserves credit for being the initial first responder to the scene and helping staff get things organized. But we got teams on board to start cleaning out and drying the facility. We had a good couple of inches of standing water on the floor when we walked in, so it was getting equipment off the ground, squeegeeing out water, and then getting a company to start drying and drying the walls, which required they pull off the molding, drill holes in the walls so that they can ventilate the walls with hot air. Temperatures got about 90 degrees in there while we were drying those rooms, so it was important that we get equipment out, and that we get employees out. So we have a restoration company that has been on-site since last Monday, and they have packed up all of the offices, they have moved community development, community development is operational right now at 358 Main Street, which I believe is the old M Club Bank in the Middleton Shopping Center, and they are quickly adjusting to their new digs. We have rented some storage units that are on-site at the community development office, that's currently housing everything that we didn't need to move with us, in, in hopes that we will be moving back to that location. The temporary site had desks for us to utilize, so that made things a little bit easier for us. We've set up the phone system, it's temporary, but at this point, I don't have any plans for them to drop additional lines. You can reach community development at their main line number, but Jennifer will be the only one answering, instead of reaching everyone by their extensions. We do have a month-to-month lease with Middleton, estimated for 60 days, and we have met today with the adjuster, no, I'm sorry, the restoration contractor who's doing the work and developing the estimates. So he is hoping to submit estimates to the insurance adjusters by Friday, and we hope to have the office dry by Thursday or Friday of this week. Still not quite dry, floors are torn out, and then we were also made aware of some existing deficiencies, which involved leaks in the back three offices of the community development, and some, I, I don't, I don't know if I would say substantial exterior damage, but we've got some exterior damage to the building that's been ongoing for a period of time, causing those leaks into the office. We've got a preliminary estimate for that work, that work would then have to be handled aside from, obviously, the flood response. It's looking like that is gonna be a manageable estimate. I don't want to give the exact numbers yet, because they're still working on putting those together, but I do want to let the council know, we may call an emergency meeting when we hear back from the insurance company as to what the estimate of the flood damage is, what the estimate of our temporary, our existing repairs will be. We do have a $25,000 deductible, that has not been budgeted, and so we may be scheduling a meeting with you next week to discuss those details. That's the information that I have for you right now.
Any council questions? Any, go ahead.
I just had a quick concern that, once we get the bid, we look at the options of replacing, I mean, if the, if the damage is extensive, you know, and we have other damage as well, if it turns out for some reason not to be manageable, or, you know, we've got 25,000 plus, whatever the cost to fix it up, to put down on something newer, newer used, or something like that, so just want to keep those options open.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, going in the same direction, because that building, we have to be sure that it's, can survive and provide the right working conditions. So, I agree. Do we have options if it ends up that all these repairs, et cetera, are just too high, that we're, yeah, do you have a, do you have a new home to go to?
They do, they do have a temporary new home, and so that new home also has a lease, $3,000 a month. So the facility that we're in, we own, and if, if we're looking at relocating community development, we don't have any existing city facilities that would accommodate them, so we would be looking at potentially a long-term lease. That, you know, that is an opportunity. City Gate has said, one of the things that they recommend for us is consolidation as soon as possible, because there's some overlap having a city hall and a community development department, that if we are co-located, could be streamlined. Is that savings worth $36,000 a year right now? I don't know. And I, my plan had been to kind of analyze these things and work with the council and staff to put together a plan. This may have created an opportunity. Our deductible is 25,000. What we're looking at potentially for existing deficiencies and existing conditions that will be our liability, and I'm not sure if they will be covered by insurance or not. It's looking like it's a deferral of maintenance, rather than storm damage-related issues, so I still have to have that conversation. But I think it could be anywhere from 12,000 to maybe 20,000 to 25,000 at the high end. So that's what I'm looking at, at that component. I'll know more next week when I see the information and the estimates. As far as everything else goes, we're into it for 25, the insurance company's gonna pick up the rest. The way that they say that our policy works is that they will restore the facility, so from their perspective, it doesn't matter that it's a modular, it's a building. So they will, they will fix what needs to be fixed. If that estimate is 60,000 to 80,000 dollars, they plan to fix. What we could consider is if we would like to utilize that fund to reconstruct an existing facility to meet the purposes and needs of community development, that's a possibility. Then we could utilize that money and put it into a new facility to potentially accommodate community development long-term. With that comes a lease long-term. So I think those will be all things for us to discuss and consider, once we know more about the actual costs. But my commitment to staff is that they will have a safe place to return to work to, and so the insurance company is checking everything from mold to asbestos, everything will be evaluated, and we'll know those impacts, and I feel confident that if staff does relocate back to that facility, it will be in a safe, good condition for them to work. It doesn't mean that we don't need a maintenance plan now for that building, so that those modulators are just not made to last a long time without regular, ongoing maintenance, and that poor building has not had an, an investment in maintenance, is the unfortunate.
Do you know how old the building is?
It was manufactured in 2004. And much of the credit for these answers is deserved Susan, she's done a lot of this research for the claims and working with the insurance company. And then I think, community development staff, if you have time, stop by, say hello, they'd love to see you, and they've been handling this very well as well, they've been troopers. The great thing about the insurance claim is that all of their time is billable as well, so up until they've been able to be operational, anytime they've spent packing, relocating, establishing new offices, will all be compensated under the policy, so that's good. We, Susan went ahead and we approved them utilizing personal cell phones, so they've got a phone stipend, and then that- So they've got a phone stipend, and then that will be covered under the policy as well.
Good job. Any public comment? Oh, I would just like to say thank you to Bob and Debbie for making this happen and getting to current allocation for everyone to move. So thank you for going above and beyond and making this happen the day of.
And we're very much enjoying our temporary location.
I thought so.
So, and I thank you for mentioning that because Destination Angels Camp and Debbie, when the flood broke, Debbie was the first person we reached out to because of the inventory that they have for these office spaces. She was able to identify every existing location that's available, the square footage, everything that we had to accommodate the various needs. And I think it was there within hours. So we were able to put together a plan. And then Bob Middleton, if you have time to stop by and thank him, has been an absolute jewel for us to work with. When we found out we needed to move, the movers were there, ready to pack up and said, where are we taking your things? And so Bob said, come on over. And so we are really grateful to him that it was able to work out so quickly. He's even giving for the lease, the month-to-month, the power, and the water and sewer. So if you have time, please stop by and let him know we're grateful.
With that, we are on to item six, council report. Start with my left with Councilmember Metoli.
Well, I was at the parade of lights for our Christmas parade at the end of November. And it was very well-received. I would say that the attendance was fabulous, the feeling all around town was great, the wine walk that was incorporated with it, all the businesses were open, everyone was feeling good, everyone was having a great time. I just think it's a great success and it keeps building. And I just thank all the organizers and the staff, everyone that was there having a good time. Just couldn't have been better. And I hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving, too.
Yeah, I was also there. I was thinking about sharing because I was very impressed. It was very good. This is the best year we've ever had, from what I hear, with the wine hop. And it was fun watching everybody walk around with their glasses, going from wine place to wine place. And, but there were young people, I mean, all ages. Somebody said, it's like a Murphy's event. So yay. But anyway, so, anyway, so, but also, yeah, I was thinking how successful in ACBA and DAC, with the downtown, having the Wild West Fest, you know, the parade. We had the high school, Bret Hart, you know, also for the homecoming. And then we have the pre-frog jump parade, I forget what it's called. But anyway, so, you know, it's just really wonderful to see everybody coming together for these events and the good organization that is there for the, you know, that, from the organizations that organize this. It's really a good job and we're getting more and more people. I think we're stirring up a little interest in Angels Camp and its downtown. So that's excellent.
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report here.
The only thing is, I guess I'll see everybody here at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. About our sleeping bags.
And then on to calendars.
Okay, I'm going to remind you again, tomorrow, 8:00 AM, right here, City Gate is presenting their final report. Then at 5:30, there is a COG meeting. And after that, Calvarious Transit meets. I'm hoping to hear from you guys regarding the 12th, when we're having our employee appreciation thing and luncheon, not thing, luncheon. And if you're having difficulty getting emails, if you haven't received that email from me, let me know. We might have some email issues because I'm using angelscamp.gov email addresses.
I haven't received an email from you in probably two months.
Oh, you know, my email, I told you.
That's interesting.
I couldn't get in.
Okay. I'm going to put your other emails back on there. And then we're going to work on getting that resolved.
It's best, yeah.
Monday, the 10th, at 5:30, there's a UWPA meeting. And on the 13th, here at the firehouse, the planning commission meets and they're meeting at 3:00 PM.
Why so early?
I'm not, I don't know. I was told they were meeting early. I checked it on their agenda, which was posted today, and it's, go for it.
Because I have to get over to Tuolumne County for a public hearing, sorry.
Okay, there you go. There may or may not be a solid waste task force meeting on the 17th.
My money's on not.
Okay, there you go. And we meet back here for city council on the 18th at 6:00 PM. And several people from city hall and other departments will be out of the office the 17th, 18th, and I'm not sure about the 19th, at ICS training. And that's it. Oh, I have one more thing, I'm sorry. I sent out an email asking for your availability on the 16th, which is, January 16th, which is our council meeting. That's not true.
15.
15. From 4:00 to 6:00 before the council meeting for a water, wastewater workshop. I've received word back from Joe. So I will send the email out again to your personal addresses so that you have a chance to respond to that for me.
Our goal with that workshop is based on the direction that we had to kind of evaluate the water wastewater master plans. And so Weber-Girolle will do a presentation on the state of our systems. And then their analysis of our CIP, and I hope we can go into the water wastewater rate study, that discussion, and then between February, March, consider the Prop 218. So that's sort of the timeline. But Weber-Girolle hope to just give you guys more time with that presentation than just a regular meeting.
And that would be here?
Yes.
At 4:00, you said?
At 4:00, yeah.
What was happening?
4:00 to 6:00?
Yes.
Oh, and that's open to the public, too, correct?
So it would be like a study session.
Okay. Okay. Are we going to put anything out for the public to be aware of it?
Well, the agenda will go out.
I think we should, if we can, if we have the capacity to do that.
So we will. And I had hoped actually that we would have done it by this point, but every step I take, I learn a little bit more about where we are. And so then push things back a little bit. So that's our goal. That is going to be our goal for right now. So hopefully, I can align Weber-Girolle, then I can align Bartwell's, and then I'm probably going to bring a discussion of block water and some water treatment plant projects and things for you to consider at that point. So I hope that's a series of events.
No, I think that's a good, a good strategy to educate all of us and the public at the same time of what is, what is going on.
And I think we kind of keep putting it out there that we are bringing these workshops and bringing this information, so stay tuned. And so, once I'm able to confirm it with all the consultants, then we'll try to get it out there ahead of the agenda distribution, so it's not the Friday before. And then I think working with ACBA and DAC, they are really great at pushing information out there via social media, which has been really helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other? Okay, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I can still get some more. So that's my credit.
See you in the morning.
I want to leave that.
Talk about it by then.